All right, I think it's time we'll call common council meeting of Monday, January 1st to order.
July 1st.
Uh, July 1st. Sorry. It always look cool. Roll call, please.
Johnson? Here. Dashlet?
Here.
Boor?
Here.
Wayne Schmidt?
Here.
Swedberg?
Here.
Meverden?
Here.
Fortleed?
Here.
And Kevin Schmidt will not be in attendance.
Thank you. I'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jamie, could you confirm the meeting is in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I would be looking for a motion to approve or to make changes to the order of the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Something going on, Matt?
Trying to hear in the back there.
Okay, I will try to speak up, sorry. All right. Wayne made a motion and I believe Lee seconded it. Did you have a question, Casey?
No, I seconded it.
Oh, sorry, Casey seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That motion carries. Uh, did everyone have a chance to look at the meeting minutes from the June 3rd, June 17th, and June 27th meetings? And if there are no questions, I would look for a motion to adopt.
I'll move adoption.
Motion by Amy?
Second.
Second by Midge. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That motion carries. Is there anybody here tonight for public comment? Uh, I'll take John first. He raised his hand first. Oh, there are two Johns, I'm sorry. John Sharp? Go ahead. If you can s-
Could you come up to the floor to state your name and your address, please?
My name is John Sharp to all you who don't know me. My address is 1508 Perry Street, Algoma, Wisconsin. Uh, my phone number is 303-808-3620. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to have a public comment. Uh, I wanted to take the time, the project that I'm starting to work on is trying to help rehab, remodel, uh, restore, uh, and create a memorial for the American Legion and Legion Field. First of all, restore the building, restore the cannon and point it in the direction of east to Flanders Field, which is where it's supposed to be pointed, and of course, there's repair. Build monument to commemorate our veterans, past and present. Every Memorial Day, I go out and put out flags, and we put out hundreds of flags, and it makes me think about, we need to have a memorial for our veterans. We don't have one. So, that's what kind of creates this. Create murals to illustrate. You know, when we're looking at Legion Park, there is an opportunity to create murals and make a statement, and, and it's a great place. We do a lot of functions there, and it's something that we can work together to do. I'm not looking to pick anybody's pockets here. I'm looking to raise the funds separately and create it, uh, you know, to make Legion Park, uh, to be remembered. Open a savings account that will be managed by the Legion. It'll be a 501(c)(3), so people can have deductions. Uh, display a therm- thermometer to raise, you know, funds raised to date. Can play with that idea. Location, of course. Uh, set up a link to donate on. Uh, webpage showing designs and goals. This benefit will, uh, benefit to both the city and Legion. Uh, fundraisers like a motorcycle show on Steel Street is a natural, and the reason why motorcycle show is that we have veterans of the motorcycle club that is huge. And if we bring them in, and we can bring in, you know, some bikes, reach out for people that have custom bikes, special bikes that are unique, and we can do it on Steel Street. We just have to find a date that we can work with. The, um, raffle tickets for winning a motorcycle, that's just an idea. Raise about half a million. Half a million may, might not be enough, because the Legion Hall is in dire need. It needs a roof. It needs, uh, windows, needs doors, needs new siding. Um, and of course, you know, with, with the mural to be approved, you know, by the city and the community, that is politically correct and also does get the statesman, uh, across for, uh, you know, patriotism. Um, utilize local businesses. The money that I raise, that I plan to get raised, will go to local businesses to do the work. I want to keep the money in town. I don't want to send it out of town. I want the money to be here so we get a community thing that's happening here. You know, I love this little town. It's, it's a wonderful town. Collect local bids, you know, for Legion Hall, roofing, siding, windows, doors, et cetera. Playing around. I came across this. I thought, I want you to donate. Now, we could have different people's faces on here. Maybe Wayne, would you?
Well, you'll have your $500,000 right away, I'm sure. Or on the dump tank.
But anyway, uh, just, that's kind of a thought, you know, the folding piece. May even look at, uh, different people in the community that might be, I want you to donate, you know. Uh, I think there, there's the ability to do it. You know, point it to press, but we don't, again, have a veterans memorial. You know, you know what I did for the veterans back, uh, at the 70th anniversary of VE Day? That, I think your, your father was there. None of those guys are alive except for, um, Maelyn Dear. That's it. They're all passed. We, we, we are so lucky to have these people, and I was looking up some numbers, and apparently, here in Algoma, we have one of the largest per capita of Vietnam vets here. You know, we have a great deal of Vietnam vets here. We also have a lot of people that, you know, gave their life for this country. And you know, when you're doing the flags in the cemetery, it's a, it's a moving experience. And I just can't. I, I've got to do something, and somebody's got to pick up the ball and run with it, and I figured, why not me? So, that's my focus. I just need your support, the community's support, to help get this going. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Hayes. I live at 516 State Street. I want to acknowledge John's worthy cause and his efforts. Good luck. I'm here actually as a resident concerned on 516 State Street of the ongoing developments. And I do want to acknowledge your efforts and the challenges that you've been confronted. However, I'm, I'm concerned as a resident, uh, that lives there and is an owner of a home and has been working diligently, uh, to maintain a certain kind of standard and, and develop an appreciation for, for the resident that I live in, the home that I live in. And I want to acknowledge my neighbors are just as eager to keep their homes looking nice, but we have been confronted with the last few years with some pretty challenging efforts as it relates to flooding and the ongoing developments across from Denny's. And I'd like to just express that I would like to ensure that there is a comprehensive and detailed plan that's going to work for our district that we live in. And what I mean by a comprehensive plan, I want to make sure that we're not sticking fingers in the dyke and trying to move forward without tying up loose ends. Uh, again, I just want to express that I do appreciate your efforts. However, going forward, I do, I do expect to get solid results from the efforts that you guys are putting forward and the money that you're spending. And in saying that, I'd also like to make a note that the district that we live in, that's just real close proximity to Denny's. I know it's not ready to do the flooding, but there are, there are troubled homes in the area that I have a feel that they're condemnable, and there should be provisions or policies adopted to start looking into the future and maybe resolving some of those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? One last time. Seeing none, thank you both for your time. It's consideration of the bills. General bills and credit card payments. Did everyone have a chance to go over those and any questions?
Yes.
And if not, we would look for a motion to approve those bills and payments.
I'll so move.
Move by Wayne, second by John?
Yes.
Uh, roll call?
Meverden?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Fortleed?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Moshe carries.
Thank you. And the chief has a conference attendance, and I think, Matt, do you want to say anything about that? We kind of went over it already, or you're just good with the-
I think it's thirty unless anybody has any questions along either of them. I don't know if you're taking them both together.
Yeah, might as well. Any questions on that? If not, we would look for a motion to approve those attendance.
Motion. I'll second it.
Casey, did you, Casey first and Lee second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Those were approved. And then we have, uh, quite a few committee reports. Don't know how many, but, uh, unless somebody wants to break them apart, if everyone had a chance to read them. Are there any questions on any of them?
I make a motion to approve the committee report.
I'll second.
Motion by Lee, second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. That motion carries. Uh, there are no new license applications. Old business, uh, short-term rental update. Is that you?
So, we just put a memo in your packet to detail the short-term rental licenses that we, uh, issued so far. There are 25 that have been issued. There's probably about a dozen still outstanding, and we will be sending letters to those that we know of this week. This is not anything that requires council approval. As long as they have submitted the required paperwork and, uh, paid the fee, then we can just go ahead and issue it.
You need no action, correct?
No action.
There's a floodplain ordinance, but I believe we need to have a motion to go, to open a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
So if I could get a motion to do that, to open a public hearing on the floodplain ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Midge, second by Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Hearing none, uh, do you want to go over that, Matt?
Yeah, so the, the public hearing is if there's anybody here from the public that has anything to say on the new ordinance. It, the ordinance has been posted in the City of Algoma's paper, which is the Green Bay Press Gazette, that tonight would be the public hearing, and I guess the floor would be open. Steve, the mayor, if you want to, if anybody has any comment.
Does anybody want to address the floodplain ordinance?
Has there been any changes or updates to it?
Um, some literature changes. Uh, this has become before everybody, you know, so we're, we're looking at it for the second time. Since then, and our court counsel has gone through this, Lee, there has been no changes.
So seeing nobody from the public, uh, with a question? I would look to close that public hearing. I would look for a motion to close it.
So move.
Move by Wayne?
Second.
Second by Midge? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Uh, new business. We have FEMA flood ordinance, ordinance, it's number 845. Do you want to read that, Matt?
It's now to Lee's question, has there been any changes? The last, since the last time we looked at the ordinance and our court counsel has gone through it, there has been no changes to it. So this is exactly what everybody has had in front of them a month ago. The mayor had asked this morning, was in my office and said, you know, has, has the map changed? The map has changed, um, but they've actually put some different lines in it. The boundaries haven't changed. They just moved some lines to lessen, I guess I would say, um, in areas where they're into the, the map never had a 500-year storm or 500-year flood event in it. So now they've more or less kept the, the original boundaries, and they moved them in and created that 500-year, um, kind of that was in some areas where it was existing. Does that make sense? So, but to the mayor's question this morning was, do we have a map? Yes, we have a map. After it's adopted, then we will have a final. Does that make sense? So, we currently do have an ordinance in place. This takes place of our ordinance that we have in place. Uh, FEMA goes through this on a eight-year basis. Um, this is our cycle now that everybody's going through them. So, it's not just the City of Algoma. This is just when FEMA gets to you, and we're it.
Can we, uh, Mr. Mayor, can we waive the reading of this and go right to the second reading?
We can.
And adopt it, because it's basically the same thing.
Yep, we, we could waive the second reading and then just adopt.
Okay. You need a motion to waive the second reading?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Wayne, second by Scott, to waive the second reading. And then we would need a motion to accept. Oh, oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Now-
Then I would make a motion to adopt ordinance 845. I'll second.
Motion by Wayne, second by Lee. Roll call, vote.
Fortleed?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Moshe carries.
B would, is the municipal financial and payroll software resolution?
Yes, but I'm going to look to Jamie on this one for any questions that anybody has, um, with workforce here for our software.
Okay, this is just coming out of finance and personnel. We spoke a little bit and more in-depth about it at that point. Um, but this is a resolution bringing forward the workforce software for approval. Uh, that would swap out the Vision Municipal Solutions programs that we're currently using and have been using for about the last 10 years. Questions?
This was discussed in finance and personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 1195-2024 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Casey. Do we need a roll call for that, Noah? Should, okay.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Fortleed?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Moshe carries.
Thank you. And C, the telephone, email, and managed IT services, resolution 1196-2024.
Yes, so this as well came out of finance and personnel with a recommendation, um, to move forward with quantum technologies. Um, we have since then, um, had some, some conversation with FTS. Uh, Ryan has come in and sat down in my office. Um, he has proposed, um, it very similar, um, what, um, quantum has proposed, but it with, working with Jamie and Aaron is still the recommendation that we move forward, um, with working with quantum technologies.
And the reason being is to keep it all as one, or is financially just how we're looking at it? Again, like Jamie had said in the last meeting, comparisons of-
It would be good to keep it all as one, I think, under, under one. Um, I think that works the best. Um, or I think it will work the best. I shouldn't say it does work the best, because some of this is all, also going to be new to us here at the city. But it is, it is our recommendation to, to make this change. I think the big thing is, you know, this all started with the phone. And then we sat down, brought a price, and then ended up looking with quantum, and they brought a kind of a package deal that I think gets us to where we should be.
Any other questions? Then I would be looking for a motion to-
I'll make the motion to go forward with resolution 1196-2024 with quantum.
I'll second it.
Motion by Casey, second by Amy. Uh, roll call for that as well?
Johnson?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Swedberg?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Fortleed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last, uh, the RDA, the revised plan for proposed portside law-offs. I know Tyler's here, and Matt's been discussing it for the last hour, so I think I'll just let you take off, and I won't put myself in.
Yeah, so just to bring everybody back, and we just had an RDA meeting, uh, prior to this at, at 4:00 PM today to go through kind of what, uh, Commonwealth's proposal here and the changes, um, from what, when it was in front of this body last. And ultimately got voted down because of a parking issue and a lot of conversation. Commonwealth reached back out to us, myself and the mayor sat down. They came up with a memo, um, on page two that has some bullet points to it, but at the end of the day, um, and the recommendation that, that's coming from out of the RDA, uh, bullet point number two will change to $119,912. And what it is, is the city will keep now the west side of the alley. Um, at, originally, that was all going to get turned over at closing to the developer. The city now will keep the west side, and we will go out to bid, um, work with a contractor to get this additional 22 parking stalls put into place. And in turn, we will enter into a lease agreement with the developer for 98 years. So that is kind of spelled out here before us in a memo. The plan upon agreement tonight, if the council and the mayor so agree to it, we would then have legal draft this as a lease agreement before we would go to closing in the developer's agreement. So it'd be like an addendum to the developer's agreement. I've already talked, where city staff has already talked with our legal. They're, they're on, our legal is on board with this. Um, it's just a matter of taking it out of mem, out of a memo and putting it into an actual lease agreement with us being the lease and the leasing. So at this time, I would answer any questions, um, that anybody has.
I would love to ask, um, would you mad?
Uh, everything's good, except for if Tyler could, and it was, uh, talked about at RDA, in that lease, add that, uh, future development of that lot could be open for discussion. If that, if we could make sure that was in that lease agreement.
When you say open for future development, meaning?
Oh, I don't, I, I would just like to be able to have a conversation, see there is an option for more parking somewhere down the road. I would like to be able to have that road open.
Tyler, do you-
Yeah, that works out, man, from the notes at the RDA, to kind of keep that door open so long as it's agreed with both parties.
Yep, perfect, perfect.
Why 98 years?
Um, I, they originally in this conversation that, that Commonwealth, myself and the mayor had, they talked about a 10 to 20-year lease. I wanted something longer. I proposed a 99-year lease. Commonwealth's legal team has a problem with 99 years. There's some old state statute that more or less after 99 years, it becomes the leasing's. That's why I backed down a year to the 98 years to stay out of that.
So after 98 years, then what happens? Goes back to Commonwealth?
It, it would be open back up to extend the lease, the, the arrangements that are set forth.
So if Commonwealth were to sell?
That will be part of the lease agreement. If Commonwealth at year four or at year 54 sells, it will be transferred to the new owner. The, the lease agreement has to go with the property. Tyler, is that, do you want to weigh in on any of that, or?
Yeah, so if you do, it simply just, uh, kind of to the agreement, it would leave the door open for assigning rights, and then the condition would just simply stay in the event, courts and law, LLCs ever sells the asset, then it's a requirement to assign said lease agreement to the new, uh, building owner. So that ultimately the lease agreement stays with the building and not necessarily just the LLC.
Okay.
Just as a point of clarification, the amount that you stated is different than what's in here. That should be, that should be adjusted to 119,000 or so.
That is correct. The, the price that is in everybody's memo, and this will be part of the, the lease agreement when it's drafted, it will go from what you currently have in front of you of $117,412 to $119,912.
That's the 2,500 to go to bid.
That is correct. So currently today, if you read the developer's agreement, when they close on this property, they're paying a dollar for this property, right? Now at closing, they're going to pay $119,912 at closing.
Thirteen dollars.
Well, and, and then the dollar. So, yes, it will be, it will be 13 dollars. That is correct.
So with these, with these 22 parking spots?
Yes.
That makes the 65?
Uh, actually, 71 now.
71?
Yes.
Now, there was some green issues with that. If we paved that over, have those been resolved?
That has been resolved, that we can work this out now. That's what we, it was discussed at the RDA, we'll possibly doing some development further west of the parking lot, but we will need that for watershed, um, to make this work with our stormwater.
Okay.
So, great question.
Jumping off of that, so we will need, like we were talking about float filters, like just because of the, the duration, because of the space that we have, we'll be able to do it all naturally.
It will work to gravity flow this west. The upflow filters will not be part of the proposal of this new parking lot design.
And that 119,000 or so, uh, how did that number, where does that number come from?
So the contractor put this out for private, for bids, public bids, for the construction of the building, for cement drywall. Part of that was for the earthwork, to do all the groundwork. This parking lot, um, was part of that bid. After, um, how things turned and went back and said, we want more parking, they went back to the contractor that they had and said, we need a bid to build this now instead of this. That's where the $117,412 comes from. That's actual cost of the building of that parking lot and blacktopping it.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarification too, that money comes to us ahead of, as soon as they close this, they pay us that money, not when they build the parking lot. So we'll have the money in hand.
Are we looking for a motion at this time?
If there's no more questions.
I'll make the motion if we will adopt this, then that's going to be added to the development agreement.
Second.
Uh, so is your motion just for this adoption or for the whole plan?
It would be adoption of this plan.
Yeah.
That now legal will draft this. It will become part of, and construction will take off.
Yeah.
And second by Scott, correct?
And I think it's also due, it was discussed briefly at the RDA meeting previously, and there's been several, um, constituents that have reached out, uh, either to, uh, myself or maybe some of the other- or maybe some of the other council members, but with concerns with flooding. And I think John had brought this up earlier when he spoke under public comment. It's, it's important to, to remember that the infrastructure that is around that, the property has been upgraded, but there is still some that needs to be done. So, it's important, I think, for the citizens, the taxpayers to know that a lot of it has been upgraded, but there's still some from that point on that needs to be upgraded as well. So, for those concerned citizens that have sent pictures, their concerns with flooding and that there's going to be a building and now some blacktop, there's not going to be a, if we're having issues with flooding now with grass, what's it going to be like after this? I think it's important that they know that we're not done yet, so there's more that needs to be done outside of this project.
You'll have a motion on the floor in a second. A roll call for that motion?
Yes. Swedberg?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Meverden?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Fortle?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Tyler, for everything you did.
Thank you, Tyler.
All right. Administrators report.
Bear with me here, it's a little lengthy, there's a lot going on. 2024 Street Project, I think everybody's probably by now noticed, all of the curb has been poured. Don't be alarmed, from Mill Street going to the east, there's about 110 feet of curb that has to get tore out on the north side that's poured incorrectly, but it will be poured as part of the flat work, guys, when they arrive here. It sounds like Monday, a week from today, the flat work crew will be here from Summers to start the flat work. That ideally, they will pour all of the flat work on everything that needs to be done, and when they are done with that flat work, then they will be moving south on Division Street to fix all of the issues that were left here late last fall that need to be addressed. Okay? So, tentative plan now, like I said, concrete is, or curb is almost wrapped up. Blacktop is on the schedule now for about two weeks, out to Blacktop. It could be anytime starting next week, that the, the binder course that's on everything south from Fremont Street, they might start milling that off in the next week or so already. But we are, ideally, they will pave Fremont around the corner, all the way down Division, and then once that's opened up, then the detour will go back up on Jefferson Street. They will knock that part of Jefferson and Frank out, they will pave that and then open everything back up and then finish paving all the way down Frank Street. It's kind of the tentative plan, with a schedule to have everything wrapped up here and out of here, hopefully by the end of July. Those are the tentative plans where that's at right now. So, Mother Nature hasn't been good, we've dealt with enough rain, but it's kind of been the common project, or common thing here with the projects, so. City Hall office hours, just to reiterate to everybody, Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 4:30 PM, Friday from 7:30 AM to 12:00 noon. Upcoming 4th of July is on Thursday this week. City Hall will be closed Thursday, July 4th and July 5th here at City Hall. So, we don't have to talk much about the TID 4, because we just walked, I think, everybody through that, where that's at right now, but that'll become part of this report and probably on an ongoing updated basis at every meeting. So, everybody has them in front of you, but I'm just going to touch on the highlights here. The Algoma Public Library has their outdoor movie night at Legion Park on Friday, July 19th. That begins at 7:00 PM. For anybody that's interested, that's a family-free event that's hosted by our public library here in the city. They do a great job, I hope anybody that's interested gets out for that. The Algoma Public, uh, Public, the Algoma Police Department has their night out, July 23rd, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, another great family event. Algoma Fire Rescue, EMS, police. I know they, I think they have somebody coming from the DNR that's going to be here in the past. I know they reach out with the Eagle III helicopter, if it works for them, they will fly in, they will be at this event. They have food, I know they have some raffle prizes to give away for the kids, so if anybody is available for the Algoma Night Out, July 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and that is up at the Algoma High School, in the parking lot at the Algoma High School, so. The 100-year anniversary of Perry Field celebration, that is on July 27th. That starts, I think, at 10:00 AM in the morning, they have food trucks, another family event. The 100-year celebration, I think they have kind of events going on all day into the evening down there for that. And that'll, we'll have some more to come, I hope, we'll have kind of the details all knocked down by the finance and personnel to get that out. So that's where that's at. The South Break Wall, or the South Pier, Rowan Salvage is continuing to work on that. They're struggling way out on the, the far end of it, but just kind of the details of it, they are demolishing, demoing what's existing down to about water level. Once a section of that, portion of that Phase 1 gets demoed, they will go and pound all the steel in, the iron all the way around it, and they will pour a new deck on top of it. It'd be stone-built back up. The elevation of, of complete elevation, when it's all said and done, is going to be real close to what's existing out there today. There's some talk that it's going to be two feet higher, there's some talk that it's going to be lower. The existing elevation is going to be real close to the elevation that is currently there today. And when I say real close, myself and the mayor were at their pre-con meeting, or at their month, weekly meeting last week. There's some control points that they're having some issues with. But the end of the day, there's, it won't be noticeable to the eye, the height difference of where it currently sits. So, that's where that is at. And last but not least, August 13th, the fall primary takes place. Polls will be open here from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at City Hall. Absent ballots have been mailed out, absentee ballots. Jamie, is there a date on, I'm sorry, right here, in-person voting, July 30th, that starts here at City Hall. So, that's for the August 13th fall primary. Does anybody have any questions for me? Yes, John?
Same level on the, on the breakwater.
Yes.
And we got water breaking over that all the time. Wouldn't it seem to make more sense to make it one or two feet higher to prevent that, I mean?
This is a government project.
Oh, okay.
I wish we had some say in it, but we don't, because there's a lot of things I would, and I think the council would agree, that we would try to change, but.
So they're not going to do anything with the north wall then? Which has the lighthouse on it and all that?
We're working through that, so the plan is to, south wall gets finished, then start the process and move over to the north wall.
All right, so it's going to be a year before we, or better?
It's going to be longer than a year, because this project is scheduled to close, I believe, April of 2027, to finish where they currently are right now on the south wall.
Are they doing any more flow underneath, underneath?
There will not be any flow underneath it.
Because you know, obviously in that corner, we have all that.
Was a big part of the early stages of the design of this, there was, I think, a lot of people from the city that spoke out. You know, back in the day when there was flow underneath there, the Corps of Engineers and their people that, that deal with this, they say that if they made flow underneath, that it wouldn't change, that we would still have that pocket on the south side of the south pier, and that was a lot of people in the cities here concerned, and I totally agree, is we get that pocket, the way the prevailing winds blow, and it kind of all gets stagnant into there and turns it into chocolate milk or pea soup.
Yeah, muck.
And it takes, usually, and it doesn't smell good. But no, there, there will be no flow underneath the south pier any longer. What's there currently will all be sheet piled off.
Okay.
Hi there, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right, the only comment I have is to Tom and everybody who was involved in that fire thing that turned out great. I know you guys did a lot of work, so thank you for that, that was a great celebration. Agenda items for the next meeting, get them to Aaron, Matt, or Jamie. Next meeting date would be Monday, August 5th, 2024, at 5 o'clock, 5:00 PM. And I would be looking for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Lee, second by Midge. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Thank you, everyone.